Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Milton School Committee meeting of September 22. It's great to see everyone. I hope everyone's doing well. First full week of school for everybody after a choppy start there. The first agenda on our agenda this evening is to approve the agenda. Has everyone had a chance to look at it? Do they want to make any additions, subtractions, changes to the agenda? Yes, Dr. Craighead.
I'd like to add an update on the warrant committee meeting from Member White under Finance, please.
Okay, wonderful. Anyone else? Yes, Dr. Carol.
Just to clarify, under your report, when we talk about the community forums, that includes the listening learning sessions, right, which were
The email that you sent me?
Different from the community forum, yeah.
Yeah, so the email that you sent me then, and Charlene updated me about the 21st, right?
Yes.
Yes, yes, there's an update. And I figured you and I could talk about it.
Yeah, yeah, so maybe just like community engagement.
So I'm gonna call them listening sessions.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you for clarifying the difference, the distinction. All right, so do I have a motion to approve the agenda of September 22, 2021?
So moved.
So moved, okay. All in favor of approving the agenda? You can just show your hands, it's fine. Great, six zero. All right, we are going to start our meeting this evening with our superintendent's update. Hello, Superintendent Jets, nice to see you.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. Before we get started, I just want to make a quick acknowledgement, but a very important acknowledgement, that of Ms. Laurie Stillman. Ms. Stillman, as many of you know, has worked tirelessly on behalf of the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, along with the, in partnership with the Milton Public Schools, with a focus on social, emotional, and behavioral health. She has been a strong supporter of the Milton Public Schools in my time as a principal, and definitely in this past year, she has supported the district along with the MS, Substance Abuse Prevention Program with guest speakers, parent speakers. She served as a member of the Health and Wellness Committee. She supported the WRBS in a youth health survey for middle school, WRBS for high school, the last couple of times that we've done it. They also secured funding, grant funding for a statistician to come out and do the report for us. She's developed a youth adult partnership. And she's, she's done so many wonderful things. She used to work very closely with the Director of PE and Health for the Milton Public Schools, who moved on, no biggie. But more importantly, she's been a friend of the Milton Public Schools, and I just wanted to acknowledge the hard work, the effort, and time, and expertise that Laurie Stillman committed to the Milton Public Schools via the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition. So I would like to just acknowledge her and give her a round of applause for her work here. Thank you. And I'm not sure if she's on or she's
I think she is.
She is, she is, and she has two of her associates are with her this evening also, and I would love to be able to have them join us for a few moments, if that's possible. It would be Stormy Lern and Margaret Carrolls, in addition to Laurie Stillman.
Did we lose him?
I'm not sure. Our Milton access person help us promote those people in our audience, too, the panelists.
Just a moment ago, he said, yes.
Yeah. Hello?
We're talking into the Zoom here. Strange world in which we now live.
There are attendees.
Yeah, I don't know that I don't have the power to
Right, right. Is our Milton access person still on the meeting?
Amy, do you, do you have the ability to promote someone?
No, I usually do, but I don't have it tonight. Because normally I can click on the people's names. Could, could we ask those three attendees to maybe raise their hands? Maybe that will give me the ability to do it. Normally, I'm doing it with Citizen Speak.
There they are.
Yeah, that didn't help me. I see them raising their hands, but
Oh, dear. I'm so sorry. I don't
So I usually show up as a host, and I'm not flagged as a host tonight.
Oh, dear.
I don't think I am either.
Looks like
Recommendation, why we try to do that, if Laurie Stillman, Stormy, and Margaret, if you could hold on, and in the process, what I could do is try to reach out to see if we could reach someone via text. In the meantime, what we could do, if that happens, then they could join us after I present the goals, and just to try to keep us on that timeline, if that is okay.
I'm so sorry. We had arranged for that, so I apologize. I know that Milton Access TV said they were running about three meetings simultaneously this evening, so he might have popped off to start the other meeting and hasn't been able to come back on yet.
Yeah, if you could communicate with them through text, that would be great. And if Margaret, Stormy, and Laurie could hang in there for just a little bit, that would be wonderful.
So Amy, while I present my goals, would you mind reaching out to Charlene to ask them to take care of that? Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm gonna turn my camera off while you're doing that, so I can call her. Okay?
Okay, yep.
Thank you.
At this point in time, what I would like to do is share my screen, so give me one second to allow me to do that. Hold on one second. Okay, it's gonna happen. And if someone could just let me know if you see my screen.
Yep, we see it.
Okay. So first and foremost, I just want to welcome everybody to the school committee meeting. For many of you, you may have heard prior at the last meeting on September 8th, I was going to be presenting my goals before the school committee. But before I started, I wanted to chat a little bit about what has been going on and where we've gone over the course of the summer. Many folks know from last January to July, we were working on, or Cambridge Education was working on a quality review for the district. On July 21st, Cambridge Education presented the initial findings of the quality review to the district, and that presentation was recorded and sent to all families via email. That was not the final version. It was a couple more iterations to that, but they did give us a quick update. Some highlights that came to light. On August 3rd and 4th, the school committee members had their school committee retreat. It was attended by myself, former Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Personnel Karen Spalding, and Assistant Superintendent Amy Dexter. August 25th, I had the luxury of welcoming back all of our leadership team, that included curriculum coordinators, department heads, directors, principals, vice principals, and myself. We were able to really look at what are those iterations of the quality review, the findings, and attempt to identify some themes and prioritize some focus areas. And I should, I will be remiss if I didn't mention, I know a lot of people wanted it. In fairness to the faculty, staff, and administration, we felt as though it was important that they had this document in their hand to kind of review, because part of it is a reflection of their performance, their job, their buildings, and we wanted to make sure that they had it before it goes to the families. August 30th, we welcomed back all Milton Public School faculty and staff, and there was a brief discussion about four focus areas for this year on the first day of school, which I'll talk about in a moment. And then September 10th, all Milton Public School faculty and staff were given a copy of the quality review and were asked to review it. They were also given the link to share to the strategic plan in case they wanted to do some comparative, compare and contrast, and they were trying to make a link to something that was in the strategic plan. And then this past Monday, the 20th, excuse me, the 20th, we held two different forums, one at seven o'clock in the morning, and one at 3:45 in the afternoon. They accommodate the two different start times for our various different schools. So faculty and staff, anyone that wanted to come to share their comments, their feedback, their inputs, and ask various questions, and they too brought up some different highlights. So again, that work will be ongoing. As mentioned a couple of times in many different forums, what are our focus areas this year? We need to get back to teaching and learning. We're gonna talk about equity, which equity is gonna be woven into everything that we do. And again, every opportunity I get, I want to emphasize equity is not all about race, although race is a component of equity. Equity relates to many different identities, opportunities, gender, special needs, socioeconomic, gender, language, religion, and so forth. We also want to focus on our social, emotional learning, not only for our students, but for our faculty and staff as well. I often say that this pandemic has impacted so many people, and in fact, it's impacted everyone. Even if it was as simple as you weren't able to go and do the things that you would normally do, like go to a bank, a post office, or a movie theater, it definitely impacted us all in one way, shape, or form. And then we wanted to talk about student and family engagement. We've been detached for quite a bit from in-person activities, meetings, and things like that. Only communication in some fashions have been one way, whether it's a blog, whether it's us speaking to you through a Zoom. But we want to get back to having that two-way conversation and communication with students and our faculty and staff. So the first goal that I have up here, and I'm sorry, because part of my menu is blocking some of this. First goal is to enhance the communication between the schools and families and develop a better understanding of the district and the district's initiative. One of the things I want to do, and we're talking to staff about this, was move our parent-teacher conferences to virtual conferences. This was done to accommodate the schedules. In the past, we had three different sessions. Some of those sessions started as early as 12:30. If you were a parent, you would have to leave, if you were working during the day, you would have to leave work just to get traveled to Milton Public Schools to go through about eight, 10-minute sessions with your teachers. So we find as though this is a way that we could enhance parent guardian participation and also accommodate parent schedules. There's one note on the in-person meetings, team meetings, special education meetings will be accommodated upon request. Parent-teacher conferences is not the only opportunity for you to meet with faculty and staff. So we are definitely taking that into consideration. By June 2022, MPS will enhance communication, understanding of district goals and initiatives by conducting four public forums, in-person and virtual, for families to discuss these topics, such as teaching and learning, equity, social, emotional learning, and I also added enrollment, budget, and facilities. I think that's important for anyone to watch in this presentation. It is important to stay in tune with those, because these are conversations that have been on the radar for the last three years, but really peaked this year when folks wanted to get back to school full-time. And so we want people to pay attention to this. And I had the luxury a week or so ago to have a parent coffee hour. It was in front of the building of Milton High School. It was supposed to last about 45 minutes, and it was a great discourse between community members and myself, and it lasted about an hour and 35 minutes. And it was the best conversation I've had with some of the families, and it didn't start off, it started off a little concerning, but I think people were able to get the information that they wanted. By June 2022, MPS will conduct two surveys, that meaning me, one for students and one for families to solicit their feedback on the effectiveness of our communication and initiatives throughout this upcoming academic year. One goal that's not on here, that I will add to it, is working with the IT Director and our Communication Specialist to enhance our blackboard communication on universal email and marry that with administrators plus. So if parents select a specific language at home, that's the dominant language at home, in the body of that text, when we send that notification home, it automatically translates that into the language of choice. So I will be adding that to that, but that is something that we definitely want to make sure in terms of enhancing the communication with our families. Oh, sorry about that. It's a little bit of a delay. So goal number two, the enhance the communication with faculty and staff to make sure all of the stakeholders understand the strategic plan and the district initiatives. By January, MPS faculty and staff will collaborate to merge the findings of the district quality review and the district's strategic plan and develop a comprehensive strategy and action plan with a focus on these key initiatives and what we're gonna do over the course of the next three years. By June of next year, I will conduct six intentional learning walks alongside principals and curriculum coordinators and directors, focusing on those key areas, teaching and learning, equity, social, emotional learning, and student. Now, this does not mean an individual principal cannot add to something that they're working on building-based or grade-level-based, but we definitely want to calibrate and have these conversations about these four different topics. And so our visits and our walkthroughs will be very intentional. I want to make it clear, these are not evaluations, but this is for us to have that professional discourse and give some meaningful feedback to our teachers, to our administrators, to help state a course with our strategic plan initiatives. By June, we hope, and it's gonna happen sooner than that, but our individual school improvement plans and principles, at least some of the principals' goals will be linked to and aligned to the district's strategic plan. We think that that is important to keep that narratives, the same narrative, the same objective to the forefront, and making sure everyone understands the goals and initiatives of the district. District goal, people have heard us talk about this in terms of our response to the disproportionate response to discipline as measured by the decrease in school removals in grade six through 12 for students who identify as Black, African-American, special education, or economically disadvantaged. By January, through grant funding, Milton PS will recruit, hire, and onboard a restorative justice coach who ideally would lead some ongoing peer mentoring and coaching, or structured professional development, and quite frankly, work in collaboration with our Senior Director of Equity Education, but also incorporate in problem-solving, restorative practice in PBIS. So I think this is a great opportunity for many of our teachers to get the professional development they so desire to help them with this, with student behavior, student concerns within their classroom. By June 2022, Milton Public School will review, assess, and revise where needed disciplinary protocols and procedures to eliminate any biases. I want the viewing public to know our protocols and discipline protocols are vetted, not only shared with the school committee, but with legal counsel. So that is an ongoing conversation that we would have with legal counsel, with some of the recommendations or changes that we identified to eliminate biases. And by September 2022, Milton Public School will provide professional development structure and scaffolding to support positive culture shift and consistency with some of these initiatives, restorative justice, and also implement the issues, implement strategies to address issues of inequities, or looking at it through equity lens. District goal number two, looking at our data in students of color who are disproportionately referred to for special education services under the communication category. Hopefully, by June 2023, all pre-K and kindergarten teachers will complete eight to 10 days of professional development with topics such as universal design, UDL, RTI, response to intervention, and multi-tiered systemic supports, and understand the difference between academic weaknesses and academic learning styles. I think that we feel as though that that's something that's important to get out there. The district will identify an early educational coach that will support the teacher implementation of these various strategies in his or her classroom throughout the coaching and mentoring process. And finally, under this goal, the district is implementing an initial evaluation, implementing an initial evaluation team to provide equity and eligibility process across the four different schools. So students will have, or students and families will have a comparable experience in the eligibility process. And that's another thing. So the student achievement goal, and I'm gonna talk a little bit about a couple of things, because I've already had a few emails today. I believe the state released some MCAS information. But in regards to student achievement and closing the proficiency gap, by 2024, Milton Public Schools will increase the number of students of color in our advanced placement courses by 5%. I want folks to know that we have a very robust advanced placement program at Milton High School, but it doesn't start when you're in Milton High School. We need to make sure that we shore up the foundational skills and content knowledge in students as they're matriculating through the grades from elementary to middle school, and hopefully boosting their confidence so they could stretch themselves and try to participate in some of the more rigorous coursework. By September 2023, Milton PS will increase the number of students meeting or exceeding expectations at each grade level by 3% in ELA, math and science on the MCAS test. By 2023, Milton PS will reduce the proficiency gap in all subgroups by 2% on the ELA, math, and science, MCAS. And then by September 2023, MPS will evaluate intervention supports in programs to assess their effectiveness of each, and then look for opportunities to implement new interventions or research-based interventions and programs. As far as equity concerned, and again, I want to emphasize that equity is gonna be woven into a lot of the things that we do. We are responsible for every student that walks through the threshold or the doors in the Milton Public Schools, and it's our job to try to make sure that they reach their full potential and hopefully expand upon that. But by December 2001, I will work with the Senior Director of Educational Equity to review her job description, narrow her scope of work, and assist in prioritization of her goals for the next two years. I think that the Senior Equity Director is very capable of doing that on her own. Very talented, very gifted, very skilled and knowledgeable. However, in terms of a partnership, we all want to make sure that we're on the same page. By, excuse me, sorry about that. That's the ice making the background. I apologize. By February 2022, all principals of Milton Public Schools will engage in anti-bias training to bring awareness to attitudes, stereotypes that affect our understanding, actions, and decisions in unconscious manners during the recruitment process, recruitment and hiring process. And then by June 2022, the leadership and special education personnel will review the referral process with the intent of developing a consistent process of making referrals without bias, particularly with students of color and those referred to special ed. This is also applicable to 504s as well. I just want to throw that in there. And then social, emotional, this is a big one. By June 2022, through grant funding, and I'm very pleased to say that we already have that grant funding. There was a grant that was written by Jenny Bellabo, High School Adjustment Counselor, in concert with Karen Cahill. But all Milton Public School faculty and staff who received training on trauma, the intent is to make sure all faculty and staff understand trauma in its broad sense in an inclusive way to recognize the effect of trauma on our students, our families, and our school community, and hopefully implementing a school-wide, trauma-sensitive approach and integrate those practices into the daily operations. And then finally, by June 2022, I will work with the SCL advisory team to incorporate a measurement tool in TELUS Spock Survey K through 12 to measure the social, emotional, behavioral health of our students, and we will use that data to identify student needs. And one of the things I want to say, this is something that was done six through 12 last year, and then under the leadership of Jenny Bellabo and Karen McDavid, Level Principal, in the SCL advisory team, and a few of us, along with Veevu, the data specialist, met with representatives from TELUS Spock to help incorporate or develop a To help incorporate or develop a assessment, a measurement tool for K through five. And because of our work with them, they are partnering with us this year and we hope to have that information. To better get a to get a better sense of our students' social emotional health. So those are just a few goals amongst many things that we hope to accomplish. And if I can stop sharing my computer screen. I'll be more than willing to answer some questions. Hands up.
Mr. Jet, you can just call whoever I see.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You have the floor. You have the floor.
I'll go by it. I see Betty White's.
Okay.
Hands up.
All right. So I I think these goals are excellent and they're very thorough. I just want to ask you a little bit about how, I mean, they're all very ambitious goals and. Given the fact that we're still dealing with COVID and we're still having kids. You know, get diagnosed and staff members, I'm just wondering a little bit about how you factor in. Any disruptions that we might have in learning with staff and students, given these very ambitious goals. So that's my first question. And my second question had to do with going back to. One of the initial goals around discipline and you talk about school removal. Can you elaborate on that a little bit more? Because I know what that means, but I don't know that if. People are listening into this meeting, what they what that means. If you could talk a little bit more about that, I think it might be helpful.
So first of all, I appreciate your questions. The first one, I try to answer it in sequence to say. That they're lofty goals and have I considered some of that? Some people might argue two percent or three percent is not necessarily a lofty goal. But I do, and I also think it would be higher, but I am factoring in some of those. But at the same time, if we're not meeting it, that's where the progress monitoring comes into place. And we figure out where we are. And then that's where we very transparently update the school committee, update the community. Where we stand and what are some of the challenges preventing us from reaching those goals, but. I I believe that Milton Public Schools has a great faculty and staff along with administrators. And also very supportive parents that want their students to do well. So I still think that we got to aim for that. And hopefully we exceed those goals. As far as the school removal, for those that don't know, sometimes students are referred to an administrator, vice principal, principal for disciplinary action. Or infraction in what school removal means, it could be anywhere from. Removal out of class, removal out of the building, or unfortunately, sometimes it could be an expulsionary offense. So our goal is to really look at restorative practices. Vice principals and principals at the middle school and high school have already gone through. Two rounds of restorative justice training. There was one session, another session that was scheduled for the first two days of school. Obviously, we can't have our principals and vice principals on the first two days of school. Even though that would have been a nice session to have. So they're going to be doing that session in November. So those school removals are removal out of class, removal out of the building, whether it be a emergency removals. Short-term suspension, long-term suspension or expulsion. Member Ross Denny.
Good evening, and thank you for creating goals that reflect. Some practices around writing SMART goals and ensuring that many of your goals align with what the school committee. Has developed so far. I have several questions, but I'm only going to ask one at a time. Say too much. I think it'd be helpful for the public to know. Who worked with you in crafting these goals?
So I I called upon the leadership team. I I spoke with our data specialists, obviously. And I should say even some of those MCAS goes are very lofty. I was on the phone with Veevo today. Just because that data just came out and then you're looking at the information which parents you will be getting a letter tomorrow. That talks a little bit about that. I've also spoken with some of our department heads, particularly, you know, around curriculum. I spoke with senior director of equity. Education. So yes, and I also took the feedback that I got from some of the information we got in our leadership team. Would not necessarily the percentage goals or things, the percentages, but what I can say. Excuse me. Very enthusiastically, the department heads, administrators back on the twenty fifth were committed to the goals. And one of the things that I'm saying about the strategic plan is to really narrow down the focus so we can concentrate with fidelity. On a few small things. It doesn't mean forget everything else. But we wanted hone in on a couple of things that we could do well to make sure. All of our students are being successful and then the public could hopefully start seeing some net gains. And see that we're building momentum and moving forward.
So similar to the school committee goals, I would recommend that we reach out to the union because ultimately. If the teachers in the classrooms who will, in many cases, will be changing their practice in order to make all this possible. And I personally am asking that as a school committee. We reach out to a subset of the MEA and I would hope you do the same just to make sure that. Everyone has an understanding of what your expectations are. And know that you are very serious about achieving these goals. With that said, it leads to my second question about change management. Your goals are, as I mentioned, they're very ambitious, but in the right direction. And there's some really good practices when you're trying to change an organization of this size. That, you know, what are the steps that people normally engage in in order to ensure their success? Because in many cases, people might not own your goals that need to own them beyond the leadership team that helped create them. But if the district would like to seek the support or the guidance or the coaching. From people who had to lead organizational change at this scale, you have hundreds of employees and thousands of students. It might be to our benefit to seek that advice. So that was a statementless a question. In terms of the two percent, how did you arrive at that number?
So we, very good question. I was looking at it and working with one of the department heads and we were looking at the. The data from two thousand and nineteen, two thousand seventeen, I mean eighteen, two thousand seventeen. Now, the downside is we didn't have MCAS data in two thousand and twenty. And then the MCAS data that we released in the spring, it's kind of an abbreviated MCAS. So you had. Students in grades three through eight. Typically, they would take two sessions. They took one session randomly selected some students of one session and then some students. Took session two and they blended them together and then the high school, second time of the new generation MCAS. Test. So I try to look at the total number of kids who are meeting or succeeding at a certain level expectation. Couple with the fact that I know that we had nineteen months of interruption. I keep reminding folks, this is the third year that's impacted by the pandemic. And so we try to factor in looking at the numbers of students who did not make it. And the same thing with closing the proficiency gap, looking at the number of students of color. Out of a certain percentage in in each individual school and coming up with a. What I believe is a reasonable percentage increase. And hopefully we could we could meet that or better yet exceed that.
My only feedback would be that I know the district has invested in formative assessment data. So you're not going to wait. You won't have that delay. In terms of anticipating outcomes. So we just encourage that. If we use both sets of data, I think it will increase the likelihood that we will know long before the MCAS data gets comes out. Where our students are. And then my last question.
Before you, before you go to your last question, that is a very important statement you made. It's. It's using additional assessments or measurements in addition to the MCAS. In the letter going home tomorrow to families, I want families to remember that, even though Milton Public Schools at every grade level exceeds the state. Achievement level. If that that MCAS data is one snapshot in one piece of multiple different pieces of assessments that use to determine how successful a student is. So to your point, that's very important for the general public to pay attention to as well.
Thank you. And last but not least, the curriculum adoptions in both math. And social studies is the anticipation that the department heads, those goals lie at their level and that's why it's not in your presentation?
No, to be honest with you, it was just like I think member White said it, you know, working with. New superintendent induction program. For those that don't know, I'm part of that. And I meet with about thirty-three superintendents. I did that last. Thirty-three superintendents and about seven former superintendents. I did that last Monday on the thirteenth out in Marlboro. But one of the things that they tried to say for first time, full-time superintendents. To really narrow your focus and don't do it. But that is still something that's on the agenda, member Ross Denny. And it's building momentum and talking about it. And it's no secret, we didn't have a curriculum. There's very little time devoted to history at the elementary level, things like that. Kimberly Kaplan, the part-time. Department head for history and things like that is already on it. She's going to be coming to either the principals or the subfinance committee. Talking about what it is that she might need to continue to move the needle forward. For an adoption of a program. And there was some discussion that started last year. As you could see, even in the equity audit, there's no mention of elementary history at all whatsoever. So we definitely have work to do that will continue. And I do think. Brian Seelick is probably, he's still moving at a steady game with his review and that's, that doesn't mean it's off the table, but it will continue in their goals. And I would definitely be giving updates on on the progress on both of those to the school committee and the community.
Thank you.
Member Carol.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you Superintendent Jet. And I'm looking forward to digesting these a little bit more and I know that we have a. Another conversation coming up as a school committee to continue the conversation about. The school committee's goals. So as you stated, it will be, you know, and as others have said, there's already great alignment between these goals that you're sharing and the ones that we had presented. And so I'm looking forward to that continuing discussion to sort of further the alignment. That said, I just have a specific question about one of the. One of the pieces that you shared about, which is the restorative justice coach. So I'm wondering if you can please. I I remember hearing in conversations around finance. Proposed ways to pay for that position. So that's the first thing is if you could. Sort of share the thinking around how that position will be paid for. And then also along with that, a little bit more about the kind of purpose of that position. In terms of helping Milton Public Schools address. And eliminate those disproportionnalities, especially around discipline that have been identified not only by Cambridge Education, but by DESI. Right? So these are things we must address, obviously. And the the concept of building that internal capacity, as you were talking about for coaching. To be able to engage in professional development. In-house, so to speak, and the ways that that could be both more effective and also more cost efficient. On going forward.
But that's a lot. So the first thing is how is it coming about in terms of the financial aspects of support for it? That was through a grant that was submitted through the IDA by Susan Muselli, the director of pupil personnel. What that was is that Sue Muselli has done a great job over the course of the last couple of years, reducing the number of. Paraprofessions that are needing and part of that is because we've given the students the support in class. And may not necessarily need the one-on-one paraprofessionals. So it's not a lot of new money. It's taking the money that we have and maybe shifting it. And hopefully doing more preventative work. So that's, that's where that funding is coming from. As far as the restorative justice coach, this is someone that we hope that has a wealth of knowledge and experience and expertise to train the trainers, so to speak. We know one person is not going to be able to do the all of the work him or herself. We need someone who trains our faculty and staff and then continue to train other people and before long. Hopefully, everybody is equipped with the necessary skills, practices to install problem solving skills, conflict resolution, things like that. Within the classroom. So we're not running into a lot of situations. To your point about what does it look like, sometimes, and it doesn't mean that you can't do it, sometimes you you contract services or you get. Someone coming in from the outside, they may give you one or two days of professional development and they leave and sometimes. The focus then falls off the table. Having someone in-house that can monitor it, walk around, walk into classes, be a support to teachers. Be a support to new teachers, be a support to someone who's just having difficulty with classroom management. This is something that could be ongoing and then that person then becomes part of our team and shares those practices. On an ongoing basis over the course of the next couple of years. So we think it would benefit. And then by doing that, we we potentially move that, not potentially, I'm expecting we will remove that disproportionality. Tag in terms of discipline, referring students of color to special ed. And then it also prevents us from sending students out. Remember, even if you send a student out, you're still responsible. For their educational services and then that becomes expensive outside. Now, if students need to go out because we can't meet the needs within the district. Then so be it. But most kids want to be in the neighborhood schools and we want them to be in the neighborhood schools if we could definitely service them here.
Great. Thanks a lot for elaborating on that because I think it's important for the community to understand, number one. This is funding that has already been secured for this purpose. This was written into the grant that was already awarded to Milton Public Schools. And I think it's just a great demonstration, as you're saying, of the district's commitment to. You know, not doing things the way they've been done in the past, but to really try something new and focus on this building capacity. And, you know, I'm I'm looking forward to seeing how this can be a lever for. Addressing the changes that we need. So thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Rosemary. You're on mute.
Thank you Superintendent Jet. Is this, these goals reflect. A lot of work, a lot of conversations and a lot of teamwork and bringing. Your staff along and your leadership team along and working together with with. Resources that we have in the district of. A wonderful staff that that has a lot of work ahead. But I I'm very encouraged by these goals. I feel that they really reflect the work. That we have before us in the coming year. I think there's a lot of news here in your goals that that. I I think is is great news for the district, you know, as as. Dr. Carol talked about the the grant funding for the restorative restorative practices. It it brings together a lot of the other initiatives that we have been working on. And and I hopefully it will, it will be the. An important new piece of 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 our approach that we're using throughout the district. To address some of the disproportionnalities that that we've seen and and so I'm excited about that and and. I think it's wonderful that we were able to find grant funds to support that position to get started. But also to have a training or training of trainers model to build our capacity is is great. I was also very happy to hear about an early ed coach. Which I see my fellow colleague, yeah, I I just thought that was great news because again, you know. This all starts with early childhood and if we don't do a good job at early childhood, we're going to be. Trying to catch up all the way through and and. We, I think it's wonderful opportunity to really be sure that our practices. Are ones that align well with the needs of our students. So that's exciting. Also, the the SEL screener for grades K to twelve. Is something that we've all seen a need for and that we're making a commitment to that is also exciting to see. And finally, for me and my involvement with the strategic plan. I'm just thrilled to see the alignment of your work with the strategic plan and. And I think we're we're in the process of getting all of our ships heading in the same direction, which is really. A goal here to to, but not only have that at. The school committee and leadership level, but to have the entire district, all district staff. Engaged in in owning these goals and moving the district forward and. district, all district staff engaged in, in owning these goals and moving the district forward. And um, I think that's what a strategic plan is all about. And I think your goals um, uh, will help us achieve those, those goals. So thank you.
Thank you for those comments. And if I, your, your comments just you uh, made me think of something. And when you say doing something different than what you've always done and thinking outside the box, I would challenge the school committee, and I'm sorry for saying this, but at some point in time, we have very limited professional development time during the day. And there's so many positive initiatives. So we might have to think outside of the box, and I'm not looking for an answer now. But maybe we commit to one late start once a quarter for something for two hours to allow everybody to get together. Because if you look at the elementary, there's three different start times. Pierce in Milton High School pretty much aligned, Collycott in Cunningham aligned, and then Tucker in Glover. And so when you try to do professional development, even if you wanted to do it starting at two thirty, then you're missing you know, almost, you know, half of your population because the elementary folks are still teaching. So to be creative like that, and that might be something that the community, the school committee in the powers that be think about, and I'm not asking for a lot, but maybe an hour and a half or two hours once a quarter, that's eight more hours of professional development where we bring people together, collaborate one another and get on the same page. So, so that's one thing. And then the second thing is uh, making sure that the community understands that these need. So these are desires, these are goals, but they're only goals and drains until they come to fruition. And so we need the community when we are lobbying and talking about these positions, what, what we need to do to push the needle forward. And then finally, I want people to know, as much as I'm presenting these goals, this is going to be the work of our very talented and gifted teachers, curriculum coordinators and directors and principals and vice principals. I'm not a fool. I know I sit at the helm as the superintendent, but the, the, the work is really going to be with those teachers in the trenches. And so when I talk about the professional development, that was one thing that I heard very loud and clear. People get, we lose investment or we lose that momentum when that professional development is not targeted and purposeful. So we don't want the one-offs. And so we need something that's going to be aligned to the goals and hopefully be consistent and people buy in. So those are things that I talk to the leadership team about, and I may come forward with a, a proposal about that, but I just think that that's something. And the other districts do it. Uh, two years ago, I was in the school where other districts, I think it was Needham and Natick, I forget which one. Um, as a former, former high school principal, I used to go around as part of a what they call a job-alike thing. And that's what they were doing. And, and they get a lot of bang for their buck. Uh, but that's something that the community is going to have to stomach uh, if that proposal comes forward. So I just wanted to share that because it was a perfect opportunity.
Um, uh, member White, did you want to still say something? Cause your hand is up.
Yep. I just wanted to uh, make one comment. Beverly, your comment about the teachers need to be on board with the goals. Um, actually, the Massachusetts public teachers and educators all have to develop goals at the beginning of the year. We use this device called Teach Point. And one goal has to be your personal professional goal. One goal has to do with your school improvement goal. And one school has to do with the district-wide goal. So they all are rather aligned. And you have to meet with your supervisor or your principal to go over those goals. So I do think in general, a lot of the goals have, at least for the years when I was teaching, um, they were all having to be very aligned in those very specific ways. So I do think we still certainly can continue to work with the teachers to get, get buy-in. But I do think there's a lot of buy-in currently as it already um, is, is displayed. So.
And I did not ask every teacher, but I will say every teacher's committee, I have not run into one teacher who purposely did not want our students to achieve at this level. Some people might need the certain skill set and support. I might need that skill set and support in some areas. So if we could target that professional development, we could get that restorative justice coach. If we could provide them the supports and those uh, tools that they need, then I, I think that they could, they could work magic. And I firmly believe that because we got a very dedicated and committed staff.
And I don't think the, the issue is whether or not they would buy in. I think it's how do you engage the people who have to do the work in a way where they feel like they were included? Your leadership team, I could see that there are many, there are several members of your leadership team that are on here that, and it's a positive sign that people felt like they were included in the process and therefore they want to see how this is going to go. You will not be able to go classroom by classroom. But I know each school has a union rep, every building has a teacher leader who people will listen to and they trust. And when you have everyone, all the stakeholders at the table in creating goals like these, there's a higher likelihood that when there's pushback, there'll be some other voice that's not yours that says, you know, we can support this work. We can do this work. We've all bought into it in, in some way, shape or form. So I'm not saying that I'm recommending to you how you do it. I've done this in organizations as a consultant because if people are part of the solution, they're more bought in to making sure you're successful. When they feel as though it's been placed upon them, there's, you have that chance for pushback. I don't think there's anything that you said today, with the exception of um, the two percent, that any reasonable person wouldn't buy into. These are all things that are right for kids. But having that extra person at that table, um, when I was planning professional development for districts all over the country, the districts that had the union at the table were more successful because they felt they were respected and they were bought into it. Um, I don't know if there's an M E A representative that sits on your leadership team that's like a liaison, but I do think it's very helpful for maintaining long-term relationships that people feel included.
And thank you. And I commend you guys for that because you guys allowed me to put a pause on releasing this quality review until the faculty and staff have a chance to do it. So that was the first step of making sure that people feel a, a part of that and be afforded the opportunity to give their feedback and input. So um, thank you for those comments and thank you guys for that support.
Yeah, thank you Superintendent Jett, um, for your presentation, for your thoughtfulness in the goals, um, and for really narrowing the focus in ways that are manageable for the district. And as I remember White said, pandemic times. Um, I was really happy to see about the early childhood coach, you know, I think you mentioning first the engagement with the community and making that one of your top priorities really speaks to what you've understood, what we've all understood about the pandemic and how much people feel it's damaged their understanding and their relationship with the district. So that's a, that's a hopeful movement forward. I just want to remind the community that the reason that we engage in this process is because the district and the superintendent and the school committee need to set goals every year in order to measure growth for students. And so what will happen from this moment forward is we will meet again on the twenty-seventh and another small retreat. It will be a Google meet where people could join and listen. There's no opportunity for um, you know, public comments or anything. You can just listen as the people did before, for us to sort of fine tune the wording of the goals that we discussed the last time to make a final presentation, which I hope would be at our October sixth meeting. And also to look at the, the two sets of goals and see that they, they align with each other in ways that are, are, are doable for the district. And particularly, I would like to think a little bit more about the formative assessment piece as that's reflected in the superintendent goals. As member White pointed out, um, we needed to add some more wording about that in our own goals. And then all of these goals will inform the evaluation process. As a new superintendent, new superintendent, new superintendents go through yearly evaluation processes. So they set goals. Um, the school committee meetings will be the evidence uh, through presentations and, and inviting guests to come. There will be a formative assessment of the goals. And then at the end of the year, a summative assessment that will all occur at a meeting for all of you to um, to um, witness. And then to, you could always send comments to us. So I just want to help everyone sort of understand why these conversations happen and ultimately what they lead to. But ultimately what they lead to is achievement for your children um, and, and, and well-being for the district. So I'm very excited to, to have the opportunity to align the goals and to be, to looking forward to teaching and learning um, during this academic year. So that, thank you so much Superintendent Jett. Um, and I know that um, um, Charlene will send us the actual copy of them so that we'll have a hard copy um, during, after this. This is the first time that we've seen them. So this is great. I know um, member Rosemary and that our friends, our former colleague, uh, Lori Stillman and her two coworkers are, have been waiting very patiently um, for us to welcome them to the meeting. So without further ado, uh, members, would you take over?
I'd like to welcome uh, Lori Stillman and Margaret Carrolls from uh, the Milton Substance Abuse Coalition that I understand rumor has it you have a new name, which um, I haven't heard about directly, but just through rumor mill, but, but um, wanted to um, thank and congratulate um, Lori Stillman for all that she's contributed to the town of Milton. Um, we were at uh, an event last night by the Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition that um, uh, named yesterday Lori Stillman Day, which we all I got, we all laughed and then clapped. But it was, it was apt because they were just, you know, it was just a recognition of all that you have contributed to the town of Milton. And, and here at the schools, uh, absolutely, we, your presence um, has been, been here for many years. Um, and, and the school committee, you were a school committee chair for a number of years. Um, you were on the school building committee the last time around. So you know, when we're talking about these things, what we're talking about. Um, then um, you were um, our S E L facilitator um, for a number of years and helped bring along our efforts in that regard. And and I hope you heard the mentions of, of the S E L screener and, and Superintendent Jett's presentation tonight. And you should feel proud that, that um, your work is still doing, doing its, its thing here. And then of course, M S A P C, which has just been uh, a wonderful organization to serve the town and, and raise awareness of substance abuse disorder and, and the issues that it brings uh, for adults and children and bringing our community together some, across so many different uh, specters of, uh, sectors of the community. So thank you uh, for all you've done. And I, I know my colleagues here uh, will probably uh, have some other comments to make as well. Just. Betty?
So Lori, I want to thank you and your colleagues for your dedication and your devotion um, over the years to the Milton Public Schools and to the issue of substance abuse prevention and social emotional learning. Um, you know, when you think about when you started this coalition, you really moved the town from denial and from kids will be kids and well, you know, all kids drink, it's not a big deal, to really recognizing that it is a big deal and it is very concerning and it's a huge public health issue. And really the addiction, you know, the knowledge that you gave people around how if you can keep kids from um, beginning alcohol consumption at a, at the young ages that they often do, you can really prevent um, kids getting addicted or young adults getting addicted. So I think that when I think about when you started and how, how much you've moved the town along, it's been really remarkable. And not that we still don't have a lot of work to do, you know, we do, but you have made such a difference in this community. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart. I will miss working with you, but I know you'll be keeping a very watchful eye on all of us.
Thank you. Thank you. Doctor Frickhead, do you want to say something? Go ahead.
Yes, I, I wanted to accuse member White of stealing my thunder. Because that's really what I wanted to say is that the, the work that you've done, Lori, the, the grants that you've been able to obtain, um, you know, so the, the funding that's come into this town for the various projects that you've worked on. Um, you've really moved the needle forward in lots of ways for us, both in the schools and in the community at large. Um, I just wanted to say you're a gem. You really are. And you deserve a, um, a very long and happy retirement. Uh, knowing that you have done your, um, your mitzvah uh, for, 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 for good. You're, you're, you're all set. Um, anyway, thank you from the bottom of my heart um, for everything that you've done. Um, really appreciate it.
You know, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Superintendent Jett and um, my dear friend Ada Rose Maron and, and Betty White. Um, and Dr. Craig had this, that really, really meant a lot. It's, you know, bittersweet to, to retire. Um, and uh, you make, you make my heart sing. So that's great. I, I know you have a lot on your agenda. I don't want to keep you, but I do want to just say one or two things. Um, the bad news is that Stormy Lern had to um, had another commitment. So she is not with us right now. But I do want to say I'm glad that we were delayed because I got to hear Superintendent Jett's report. And what struck me about it is that most of the things that he talked about is about primary substance use prevention. Social emotional learning, restorative justice and addressing trauma are the basis for substance use prevention. One of the number one reasons that kids use drugs and alcohol is to um, deal with their emotions. And a lot of that stems from the brain changes that happen from um, childhood trauma and adverse childhood experiences. And if you, the good news about trauma is that if you intervene early and you show um, compassion and support to kids, it actually can mitigate the harms that they have experienced in their lives. So, um, and the reduction then is, is seen in um, alcohol and drug um, use. You know, part of M S A P C's strategic plan, um, because the Centers for Disease Control now recognizes that um, trauma and mental health issues are sort of the underlying bases for a lot of substance use is um, that we put in our own strategic plan, becoming a trauma-sensitive community and to focus on restorative justice in the community. And to the extent that our community, our schools, our police, our social services, our public health, all can be aligned in getting those goals, the better results we'll all have in all of this. It's not about just saying no. It's about the policies and practices and the compassion that we have in our, in our um, community. So I'm really excited and uh, to see that we're sort of all working together on the same wavelength and, and that gives me a lot of great feeling. Um, I do want to also say that I am so happy that Margaret Carrolls and Stormy Lern will be replacing me as co-directors. Um, I have had the pleasure of working with them for the past three years. Margaret has a master's degree in family services, um, the family um, uh, family studies from We Live College and uh, Stormy has a um, masters in public health from Boston University. Their um, skills really complement each other in incredible ways. They're very committed. They get primary prevention. And um, I'm, I'm just thrilled that the schools are still um, happy and willing to uh, sort of continue this work and collaborate with, with them. Um, and finally, Ada, yes, you are right. Uh, that rumor is true. Um, you know, one of the biggest problems with mental health and substance use disorders is the stigma that's attached to it. Um, there's a lot of shame and embarrassment that people still have. And the words that we use do influence how people feel about themselves. Words like addict, like um, alcoholic, and even substance abuse really um, puts the blame on the individual's actions rather than looking at it as an issue of people's pain and um, and a biological process. And for that reason, we recognize in our coalition that the Milton's name Milton Substance Use, uh, Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition um, really did not meet our goals of compassion and reducing stigma in the community. And so we have decided to rename ourselves uh, the Milton Coalition with the tagline, addressing substance use and promoting mental health. And um, I'm, I'm proud of this change and, and leaving the coalition in such good hands and on a positive note. And I want to thank you. And I don't know, Margaret, if you wanted to say something quickly before we, we sign off.
Uh, I just, thanks for having me. And I really look forward to working with all of you and uh, Mr. Jett and Lori's living, leaving some big shoes to fill, but um, Stormy and I have learned a tremendous amount and we look forward to, to following in her footsteps. So thank you.
Well, we, we look forward to um, working with you and getting to know you and Stormy um, in different capacities in your new work. So congratulations to the both of you. And congratulations to you Lori on your retirement. I, I'm sitting here listening um, to you thinking that um, I first met you as a parent, right? I was a parent in the community and you were a school committee member. And I was one of those parents.
And I was one of those parents emailing you all the time with questions about this and questions about that. And oftentimes, when I receive emails from parents, I remind myself that in those emails, in those young parents, there is a Lori Stillman, right? There is a parent who will work with the district in so many wonderful ways to enrich the lives of many people. So that's what I keep in mind when we receive the emails and we get reach out from parents, because I know out there, there's the Lori Stillman who will add so much to the community. So we wish you all the best. Enjoy your beautiful granddaughter, or if you have more than one, and and all the happiness to come.
Thank you, and good luck to all of you.
Thank you.
Sorry for keeping you waiting.
Thank you, guys.
All right, Superintendent Jett.
I just have two more quick items. The first is first item on here, I would like to make a recommendation. As many of you know, Dr. Spalding submitted her letter of resignation on Friday, the twenty seventh of August with a final date of September tenth, Friday, September tenth. I communicated to the public, I communicated in this venue, sent a letter to folks, letting them know what the process would be. I reached out to the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. I also reached out to current superintendents to see if they knew of someone who was a recent retiree that would be considered taking this job as an interim, knowing that we will be advertising in December slash January to make sure that we cast the wide net to get the most qualified individual to come on in July first as a full-time assistant superintendent of curriculum personnel for Milton Public Schools. In doing that, I was able to net four individuals through through those two organizations and then the live groups. And after vetting some of them, some of them probably would have been a good fit. Some of them were a little hesitant about the long-term commitment in the political climate of the leadership role. I also thought about in-house candidates, but I also know if you pulled somebody from their current role is going to leave another void and put us in this situation. After careful consideration, I even reached out to former superintendent Glenn Pavlicek. Mr. Pavlicek loves the Milton Public Schools, still commits, but I think he loves his wife a little bit more, and he respectfully declined, which I respect that. And and then I reached out to former assistant superintendent curriculum personnel Janet Sheehan, who expressed the interest in this. For those that don't know, Janet Sheehan used to be a teacher in the Milton Public Schools at the elementary level, and along with a teacher at Randolph Public Schools. She was an adjunct professor, she was assistant principal, principal of the Colley Court, then she was a principal down in Cohasset at an elementary school. And then her final six years in the Milton Public Schools before retiring in two thousand and nineteen, she was the former superintendent of curriculum and personnel for the Milton Public Schools. So I would like to, with your, bring to your attention and ask for your approval if I could make that recommendation to have Janet Sheehan come on as the interim superintendent for the remainder of the year. I also, with the differential, I would also tap into a couple of department heads or curriculum coordinators to also service and support, although Janet Sheehan has done this work previously. We also know that she's been removed from the arena, this this educational arena for three years, even though she was very instrumental in bringing the literacy program and working on that coming into the district. So I will be calling upon a couple of people and using some of that staff exchange to kind of supplement and stifle those folks to help out with some of those initiatives. And what's important about this, Janet Sheehan has no interest as a retiree to return and to become the full-time assistant superintendent. So what's nice about this, when we advertise it, folks outside of the Milton Public Schools will be more willing to apply, take that risk, knowing it is not an in-house candidate that's in that position. And it doesn't mean someone in the house can't apply. I want to make that very clear, too, but I just want to put that out there. So with your permission, I would like to proceed conversations and conversations with Janet Sheehan, and then maybe tap into a couple of curriculum coordinators or department heads as a support.
Okay, so thank you, Superintendent Jett. Wow, okay. Janet, from retirement back into this climate of 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 education, thank you so much for doing the research and reaching out and to reaching out to Dr. Pavlicek and former assistant superintendent Sheehan. So I I guess there's a motion on the table from Superintendent Jett. So what we do is we can make the motion, have a second, and then have a conversation. So there's a motion on the table from Superintendent Jett to recommend the appointment as interim assistant superintendent for the academic year two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two of assistant, former assistant superintendent Janet Sheehan. Okay, so now we can proceed with conversation. Dr. Krighead.
I am very, very enthusiastic about this for many reasons. One is exactly the reason that Superintendent Jett ended with, and I I think in some ways it's the most important reason, because we want to be able to hire at the right time. We don't want to do it in the middle of a school year. We want to be able to get the widest possible, best, most robust pool of applicants that we can. If you have an internal candidate, they go running. You don't get the same candidate pool. So for those reasons, absolutely. But Janet Sheehan served this system, this district, really well in her six year, well, even before that, but certainly in her six years in this position. She knows the job, she knows all of the HR stuff. And with the additional supports that Superintendent Superintendent Jett mentioned around curriculum, I think we're going to be in great shape. I I couldn't have I couldn't have come up with a better solution to where we are right now. So I'm I'm enthusiastically in favor of it.
Thank you, Dr. Krighead. Would anyone else like to have any comments about Superintendent Jett's recommendation, Member Rose Marin?
I would just say a giant ditto to what Dr. Krighead just just said. I I just think bringing Janet Sheehan back and that she's willing to come back to help us out during this year is wonderful. She knows the district, she knows the staff, she knows education. She's got excellent experience for this, and she'll she'll pick up quickly sort of what what's been happening since. And thank you, Superintendent Jett, for talking her into it.
All right, anyone else have any comments? Oh, I think it's great. I I'm surprised because, you know, I know she went off into retirement, and I think it's wonderful. I think what it will add to the district at this current time is some some support and stability for Superintendent Jett and Dexter. Both of them being new in their roles, although very experienced educators and professionals, new in their roles, super assistant, former superintendent, Sheehan has that experience, so she can bring that to the table. And I also think in terms of the goals from the superintendent and our goals, thinking about curriculum, thinking about those things, she has experience in those areas, you know, bringing in new new curriculum to the district, working with the coordinators, and I think she'll be a great point person for this year as to be work on those goals that Assistant, that Superintendent Jett put out, put forward, and also the ones that we have, particularly as they pertain to the curriculum, the purchasing and looking at new curriculum, and also some of the ones we have around the discipline and you know, reducing some of those gaps that we see. So I think this is a great recommendation. So all right, so the recommendation in the the motion has been made and seconded, so we'll have to do a roll call vote to appoint former assistant superintendent Janet Sheehan as the interim assistant superintendent for curriculum and human resources. I'll start with you, Member White.
Yes.
Dr. Krighead?
Yes.
Member Rose Marin?
Yes.
Dr. Carol?
Yes.
And Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
And Member Eberhart, yes. Okay, that's a six zero vote. Superintendent Jett, let us know what needs to happen next. You'll have discussions with her, and then she'll come back to us with information about her start date, the contract, or anything else that we need to consider.
Absolutely.
Welcome back.
My final thing, it wasn't on the agenda, but we got a couple of emails over the last couple of days around the testing. And if I could, if you could indulge me for
Yes, if you would, that would be great, because a school, a community member emailed right before or early, late afternoon, had a question. I I didn't even know how to answer, so.
Are you guys able to see my screen? Okay, so so very quickly, I just want to give you an update because I think what's continuously happening is things are evolving and and things are changing and coming from the state. And the state may meet with superintendents and share that information, but may not share that information publicly with some of the challenges they face. So to give you a quick heads up, I wanted to give you the testing initiative timeline. August twentieth was the deadline for applications for the testing program. We put out application in on August twenty-third. I received the email saying that Milton was approved for the test and stay, but we had to wait until we got a C I C health representative who would be reaching out with us for onboarding. August thirty-first, which is the Tuesday, the day before school started, a representative from C I C Health held a virtual meeting with Kim Coughlin and myself and talked about the testing program. C I C Health informed us that they will be ordering test kits and hiring a registered nurse to support the program. On the night, DESI held an emergency testing meeting to give us an update on there. And on that meeting, they talked about that they were overly optimistic or having some challenges securing a lot of the staff, or C I C was having challenges securing a lot of staff, because probably our, every district in the Commonwealth probably applied for the program to some level of support. September ninth, DESI and C I C asked for districts, asked districts if they knew of any nurses. We recommended a couple of nurses, and ironically, or thankfully, one of the nurses we recommended actually got hired, but that nurse was not able to start until the twenty ninth. We were also informed on the night that the By Next Now test kits were somewhat delayed. We have since gotten those. We hope that we could start our test and stay program next week, the middle of next week, when we have the onboarding of that. And we were ready to go, we were just needing these items. I wanted to, and you can't really see this, people ask, well, there was four different programs. There's actually three different testing programs. One was symptomatic testing, one was test and stay. We're doing the first two. We on pause, I believe I said that at one of the previous school committees, that C I C said if we graduate and move towards pool testing, we could also request for additional support, and they provide us with a CNN. But they wanted to see what the numbers were before they had it, because they were spread thin throughout the Commonwealth, just even with the test and stay. And the third one was the pool testing. They're the same thing. One is just school-based follow-up, and the other one is a lab-based follow-up. So they're the same thing. So there's only three programs. We did two with the possibility of doing pool testing later down the line. Now, one of the biggest questions I have is, can can students go to their primary care physician until you get get the test and stay program up and done, up and ready? We can only use the By Next Now test as part of the test and stay program. And this is a DESI website slide. I just want people to know, you can go to the DESI website, you can see it for yourself. By Next Now tests are going to be available from the state to all of the school districts free of charge. We were waiting for that. We didn't factor that in our budget to buy these tests going into that, so we had to wait for that. And then it says, we should never be, some people are asking, we should never be instructed to purchase tests. And it's hard for us to tell parents to go get the test, because depending on where you go, sometimes it could be a hundred to a hundred seventy-five dollar fee. And I wouldn't want to tell parents that that's what you do, and then you come back with the the bill saying, well, you told me to do this, because under these circumstances, you would have to test five days in a row. That's that's that could be an inconvenience for some, but I also understand it's an inconvenience for your children to stay at home. Some people have done it and was able to get the the By Next Now test, and and we're trying to work with families on that, but please give us that flexibility and and have some patience with us, because this is new to all of us. And we're we're trying to get the state to give us those answers before we say yes and have that widespread. But again, we hope that our end starts on Wednesday, the twenty ninth of next week, and if that's the case, that person's already been doing some training and collaborating with Kim Coughlin, the director of nurses for Milton Public Schools. Another thing that happened is people said, well, you're not being transparent about your numbers. I want, if you look at this, and it's bolded, I did not bold it, this is DESI's website. Prior to the start of the year, they weren't going to collect cases. Then they started seeing the numbers increase. So although we've had ten cases in the Milton Public Schools as of last Wednesday, we now have twenty, and I'll explain that in a second. I only could report from last Monday the thirteenth to last Wednesday the fifteenth. So that's why on the state website, it says one, one student, one staff, and six close contacts. They wouldn't let me report anything prior to that. So at that point in time, last Wednesday at five o'clock, we had ten cases from September first, the first day of school, until September fifteen. This past week, we just closed the day. This past week, all the way up until five o'clock, we had eight students, two staff that were positive. And ironically, right before I got on this meeting, we got word that we had another staff member who tested positive, which will go on next week's reporting, reporting. And so I I just wanted people to see that. That's a DESI website. You can see it down at the bottom, left-hand side. And then what is a close contact? Again, it's it's someone who's been in close contact less than six feet of distance for fifteen minutes or more while indoors, and they emphasize while indoors. And that's in a twenty-four hour span as well. But outside with mask off, they're not calling it a a close contact. And another thing, I should go back about the test and stay. Test and stay is only for school exposures, school close contact. You can't come in and say, over the weekend, I went away to New Hampshire, someone in New Hampshire had it. That's not part of the test and stay, it's totally different. Again, I didn't add that slide, but anyone wants to go to the DESI website, you can see all of the slides that they have regarding this testing program and in the testing program in close contact. So some people have asked, well, what can you do? Again, these, some of these slides we sent home and some of them on our website. Can individuals as identified as a close contact while at home? I just referred to that, non, non-school-based close contact. They, can they return to school and participate in the test and stay program? The answer is no. If they are, you have two different options. I won't go go into them in great detail. But once again, we'll make sure that we have the link to these slides going home tomorrow in the blog, so I ask people to do that. And then finally, the sixty percent. For those who saw the consent form, the consent form had all three testing programs, the symptomatic test and stay and pool testing. It's it's a state-issued consent form, so we sent it home. We need the sixty percent if we eventually graduate to pool testing. It makes no sense to do pool testing if we only have five percent or ten percent of the population. We want to have at least more than half to make it worth our while to do the pool testing. And we could only test students whose family gives us consent. So some families have said, I'm 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 all for the symptomatic testing, I'm all for test and stay, but I do not want my child to participate in pool testing. All we ask folks to do is just put that on the form. Unfortunately, that is the form that is given to us by a state. The state, it's a universal form, so that's why we were asking for the sixty percent. That was a conversation we had with the C I C representative that we met on August thirty-first. So I apologize for any confusion by that. This is not, it is not a DESI requirement, the sixty percent. I want to make that very clear. That's what we were saying, that we needed to really make it worth our while with forty-four hundred students. We want at least sixty percent of the families to give consent so we can initiate and then sign on to get their CNA to do the pool testing. So that's where we are, but I just wanted to provide that clarification for some of the families, because I know some people had some concerns about that. So I will stop sharing my screen, and that is my final piece. Yes.
Superintendent Jett, are you able to share where we are with the numbers so far right now?
Yeah, I just did. I just did. We're up to twenty cases as of today.
Oh, no, sorry, sorry. I meant, I meant the number, the percentage of of families who have opted into the consent, sorry.
I don't have that right now, but what I would do is make sure I report it out in the blog. Unfortunately, yeah, this wasn't in to get it, so.
Yeah, sure, just so people know
Right.
how close are we to that and hopefully to motivate people to get on it if they are willing, but just haven't gotten to it.
I will, I will encourage people to at least participate in the symptomatic and I will, I will encourage people to at least participate in the symptomatic and test and stay. And I'll tell you why. It is a different track if you get tested as part of the test and stay program. And if you're negative, you could remain in school as opposed to not being part of it. Then you have to quarantine and stay out of school and then you're missing that valuable in-person class time. Now, don't get me wrong. If someone has to be out for medical reasons, we definitely support you. But if we can have folks in school, we want students in school.
Yeah. Does anyone else have any questions? So thank you, Superintendent Jet. I know it's a lot of moving parts for the district and for families, right? And I think the goal that we stated at our first meeting of the, of the academic year is that we want to stay open. We want students to be in school learning. We want there to be a continuous process of, process of learning this year for students. And the best way to do that is to have this test and stay program and the symptomatic testing. I know there are lots of different feelings about pool testing, but I know that even if 60% is the threshold that Milton set, I'm pretty sure that we, you could look up that most districts have a, a threshold percentage because they really want more parents to participate. Because like you said, Superintendent Jet, if you're not participating in the process and then you get exposed, then you have to quarantine and you're defeating the whole purpose of having the test and stay. We want your children to stay in school. The only way we're allowed to do that this year is if we participate in the test and stay and show that we're monitoring the spread of the virus in school, right? So that, and you know, so just, you know, if you have specific questions about pool testing, whatever, you could reach out to the nurses.
I would encourage people to go to the website because those are live documents. This is such a fluid situation. And I think some parents get frustrated. If you emailed me on September 1st, you may have gotten one thing, but September 22nd, things have changed. Our live documents on the webpage for COVID.
Thank you.
And they're linked to D P H, linked to Desi. So when they make changes, it's live. So what I encourage people not to put out stuff, but go to that page.
Well, thank you, Superintendent Jet, for clarifying that for me and the community. So thank you for all those updates. Thank you for the goals. Thank you for having Lori, Margaret and Stormy here. Thank you for the, you know, the recommendation for Janet Sheehan and, and we're looking forward to the next step for all of that. So wonderful. So the next item on our agenda is Citizen Speak. If you would like to participate in Citizen Speak this evening, you can raise your hand and you will be promoted to speak. I would remind everyone that when you participate in Citizen Speak, please state your name and your address. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Citizen Speak lasts for up to 15 minutes. The committee does not engage in conversation or back and forth or respond to your comments. We take notes and try our best to answer them in different ways. And I remind you to address your comments to the chair and to not specifically address or call out anyone in the community. So with that, I welcome anyone to participate in Citizen Speak. I don't know who's going to move people forward though. Is that you, Superintendent Dexter?
I can. Right now, nobody is raising their hands. So I would just ask that if you're interested in speaking, please raise your hand so that I can see your interest. Still no one. Last call. Would anybody like to speak at Citizen Speak? Please raise your hand. Nobody seems to be interested tonight.
Thank you, Superintendent Dexter. I really would like to thank the community for sending emails that have questions that we can answer. You know, and specifically sometimes people send an email I might not be able to answer. I forwarded that to someone who can, or I tried to address it as best that we can. But it's helpful to know what you're thinking and what your questions are so that we can specifically address them in some way, either through an email or an opportunity to address them at a live meeting. So thank you for, for participating in that way. It's very helpful for us to know what you're thinking. Okay. So we'll move on to the chair's report. So I'm going to start out with talking about the listening session. So on the, on the agenda says community forums, but as Dr. Carol pointed out before, they're, we're calling them listening sessions and they're part of our goals that we setting for ourselves that are still not approved, but we're still moving ahead with the listening sessions. And I know, I don't know, Dr. Carol, if you want to join me in this conversation. We're having our first listening sessions on the October, is it the 21st? Right? Let me just make sure I got that right. I have it written here.
No, that's the community forum on Equity.
The community forum is going to be on October 21st at 7:30 and at 6:00 P M. Okay. So you will get, so from, you know, from the district, you, you will get a communication on how to log on. Those will be virtual. And that forum will be on the 21st. I, I will offer one in the morning at 7:30 and one in the evening at 6:00 P M. And the community forum is to address input and feedback on the Equity Audit Quality Review by Cambridge Education, which will be released to the community tomorrow from the district. That was the, a date that we gave at the last school committee meeting. So that's going to be on the 21st. Please be on the lookout for the links for that so you can join us at that session. Dr. Carol, I don't know if you wish to say anything about that.
No, I think just consider that sort of save the date. And as you were just saying, more information about the format and what you can expect will be forthcoming.
Right.
And we wanted to be sure to schedule that with enough time for the community to digest the report. You know, before being able to come and bring questions.
Right.
So, yeah, that.
And then we, we will also be offering the listening, the community listening, learning sessions. And I believe that on the notes that I have here, that one will be held on, the first one will be held on October 8th. Is that correct, Dr. Carol?
That was our, that was sort of our thinking. I mean, initially we had proposed
Tonight.
Tonight, but you know, we're still finalizing our goals and figuring out how to pilot something new. So that was the, the proposal was that at the next school committee meeting, it would be the 30 minutes preceding the meeting, so 6:30 to 7:00 P M. A separate Zoom meeting opportunity to come for, you know, what we were trying out as essentially an extended Citizen Speak opportunity where, you know, I, I'm conscious that it's now, the past two weeks, actually, nobody has spoken during Citizen Speak. So I think when we were initially thinking about this goal, it was to create more ample time to welcome those voices. Recognizing that our, the time 15 minutes in the school committee meetings is short. And in the past, sometimes not everybody who's wanted to speak has been able to be heard during that 15-minute time. I, the only other thing I would add is that the goal here was to just hold one in a couple of weeks from now.
Yep.
Along with that, disseminate a Google form for feedback from the community, including from people who do not attend that day, but would like to share their input around preferred means for, you know, having their voice heard by the school committee. And, you know, the idea is we will kind of, as a pilot, we will learn from feedback as we go and hold a few different of these kinds of opportunities which are not opportunities for dialogue with the school committee, but rather for the school committee to listen and learn from members of our community and have that opportunity to follow up following the meeting about particular concerns. So I think, as you were saying, Margaret, just people can be on the lookout for information and Superintendent Jet will follow up with you about how to make sure that this can be included in maybe next week's blog or we'll follow up.
Yeah. And I just want to point out to people that, you know, all of us might not be, so all the school committee members might not be at that initial like the listening session, maybe two or three of us will be there for the first few. And then we'll see, as Dr. Carol said, from the feedback, what people think of it. And then how do we want to move forward? Do we want to have some public hearings on something? Do we want to have more opportunities where once we had a forum on transportation, we actually had a conversation with us, with the community about some of the issues? I, I just want to remind the community once again that some of the challenges about being a school committee member is that the only time that we actually have any decision-making power or anything that's different from anybody else in the community is when we're all together at a meeting. Otherwise, we're just citizens of the town and when we, and we represent our own opinions perhaps sometimes. But the only time we represent the, the school committee is when we're all together at a meeting or at a subcommittee meeting. That is an open meeting because all of our communications are open. So we're looking forward to the first forum and also to the listening sessions as well. I do think, Dr. Carol, that people will, once they have the audit to look at, and then also after all the MCAST information was released by Desi, I think parents might have some questions and wonderings about how we're going to use that information to inform the, the upcoming academic year. So thank you so much for all your work on this. I think it's going to be a really successful opportunity to engage with the community and have people feel more like they're a part of that. All right. So that's the listening sessions and the community forum update. I did send to you all just a little while ago, so you will not have seen it yet. The, the rewording, the wording for our proposed new advisory committee. We are not going to vote on this committee this evening. I am going to share. So I'm going to share the wording on my screen so we can look at it if you just like, if I can find it here. Okay, hold on. I'll see if it works. Hold on. Here we go. All right. So I'd like to thank Member Ross Denny for sharing some wording around this. We discussed at our few meetings ago when we were, we were creating our advisory and subcommittee committees for the year of forming two new committees. And right now, I think we've settled on just having one. And what we're calling this committee is a curriculum and instruction advisory committee. I am not going to read this paragraph out loud, but you can read it for yourself right now and then digest this information. And we will come back. We can discuss this also at the retreat and then come back at our next school committee meeting to vote on it. I do think that one of the things I'm thinking about this committee is that it's very timely in that we're going to have an interim superintendent of curriculum and human resources and a lot of initiative around curriculum. And also the community seems to want more information and more understanding of what we're teaching their students, their children and how we're teaching their children and what that all means for their children. And I think this will be a way to sort of bring all of that information together and then be able to share it out at a school committee meeting. So I open the floor to any comments. I can't see you all, so just start talking if you want to ask me any questions in particular about this wording as it sits now, but we certainly are open to any changes or suggestions from the committee. So remember, I can't see you, all of you. So if you have something to say, raise your hand or not, then that's okay too. I will say that there are districts, there are several districts actually that have a variety of committees with either it says the Teaching and Learning Advisory Committee or a Curriculum Advisory Committee. And there's, in Framingham, they had some nice wording around how they implement the, the work of this committee. It will have basically two or three school committee members. So if you're interested in being on this committee, we can discuss that at our next meeting. And I, and that's that. I'm going to close my screen. Does anyone have any questions right now? Thank you. Member Ross Denny, would you like to share anything? I really appreciate your work on coming up with the wording and sharing that back with me to share with everyone tonight. No? Yes?
I don't have any additional comments. And I will say that I'd appreciate people's input. It was an attempt to show that we're limiting the scope of the committee in terms of its expectations on M P S staff. So as you saw, there's only, I think, two or three people. And then there's a listing of people who normally engage in curriculum and instruction, or some people call it teaching and learning, that might be invited in as needed. But I'm very sensitive to the fact that our educators are very busy, right? They're teaching our kids. They're planning for the school year. And if there's anything we can do to keep this dialogue going without making an extra burden, that was one of the major objectives.
Yeah. Thank you so much for bringing that to our attention. I think, I do think this will be a very helpful tool. Yes, Dr. Carol, for helping the community understand better a little bit too about what's happening. Yes, Dr. Carol, sorry.
Yeah. And I just see this as a necessary support for the ambitious goals that both the superintendent has shared with us and that we are in the process of developing as a school committee. So I've said before in previous meetings about this, but I'm strongly in favor of moving forward. So I'm excited to be able to vote on this in a couple of weeks.
Yeah. And I thank you for your patience as we sort of worked through that. There were so many things happening all at once. I didn't want to shortchange the, a very important new initiative. So appreciate the patience that everyone exhibited. So we'll bring that to, yes, Member Rosemary.
Yes, thank, thank you, Beverly, for your work on putting this together. Couple, couple of comments. One is, I wonder if we shouldn't make it be aligned with Superintendent Jet's goals and referring to it as the Teaching and Learning Subcommittee as opposed to Curriculum and Instruction. And, and the other is whether I, I saw how, I don't have, I see the language right now, but I will look at it again. But that, that it's related to policy recommendations that we might make, which is our role. But I'm also wondering about that, you know, how this might inform our financial recommendations as well, that, that this committee could be, help us in evaluating, you know, what priorities might be or, or, you know, what kinds of choices we might need to make in, in terms of making resources available for new curriculum.
I agree with you on both. The Teaching and Learning title is something Margaret also mentioned. And initially it was meant to parallel the title of the Assistant Superintendent. But I think Teaching and Learning is equally appropriate. But to your point about this might be a way to identify early on if there are resources needed. I think that our, our staff have been very proactive that when they need resources, whether they're applying for grants or they advocate internally. This is a great way to bring it to the attention of people in school committee because some of those concerns are managed internally and managed gracefully. But in some cases, especially when there's a resource request, it's, it would be nice to know before it hits the finance committee that we know that there's a need. So once that meeting, the finance committee meeting starts, we can speak intelligently because we know, we're well-informed about why that need exists. For those who were able to watch the Joint Select Board and School Committee meeting, Susan Vasselli was kind enough to attend and share why these resources, why specific resources were being requested. And it was such a help to, to carry the discussion further. And I, I liked that forum. And this is the type of committee that would allow that to happen before we get to the Finance and Select Board Committee.
Yes, thank you, Members Mary. And I think that's an excellent, and so we can discuss at the meeting, our goals meeting, to change some wording in there and then share it out there and then at our next school committee meeting. All right. Thank you all so much. Any thoughts or comments? You can reach out to Beverly or we can have a discussion next time. All right. So we have to vote this evening on appointing Superintendent Jet to the South Shore Educational Collaborative as our representative. This is an annual vote of the school committee to appoint either the superintendent or his designee as a board member for the fiscal year to represent the district. So as, because we're part of the South Shore Educational Collaborative. I don't know if, if that, there was an attachment or there was information that we read about the South Shore Collaborative. I don't know, Superintendent Jet or Superintendent Dexter, if you wanted to add anything specific about the South Shore Collaborative and what benefits that is for the district, just briefly, very briefly.
Yeah, very briefly. It, it is very informative, obviously, as the interim superintendent sitting on a few of the meetings last year. They do provide reports that I'm required to submit to the school committee for your review. But I think in addition to the collaborative, it is a professional development opportunity to see what other districts are doing, how they could the difference. That they never go or do. So I am, I would.
Okay, great. All right. So the motion on the table then is to appoint Superintendent Jet as the representative to the South Shore Educational Collaborative for the 2021, 2022 academic year.
Okay.
Okay. All right. This will be a roll call vote. Member Rosemary?
Yes.
Member Beverly Ross Denny?
Yes.
Dr. Carol?
Yes.
Dr. Craighead?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
And Member Everhart? Yes. All right. White, another, another task, another job for you, Superintendent Jet. Thank you so much. All right. The last thing for me is the annual report. Did you, you all received a copy from Charlene about the annual, the annual report? It was a sort of a lengthy document describing the academic year. If I understand and I'm remembering correctly, help me, Member White, the annual report goes in the warrant, yes, at some point or no? Where does the annual report, the annual report book?
It's a, it's a book that's, although I don't know that they're going to be mailing them out like they used to. I think they're going to try to make it available in another format.
Right.
But all reports from all departments are in there.
I used to get, we used to get a, a hard copy of it at our home. I don't know if that'll be the case. But does anyone have any questions, comments or changes that they wanted to make to the report? It basically was, and it'll be available to the public. Anyone can obviously be available to everyone. But did anyone have any comments or thoughts or? I thought it summed up the year pretty, pretty well. I thought it accurately reflected the, the year, the challenges we faced with COVID, the conversations with the community, the hopes that we have for the future. Each school has a section in it. And they talked about their individual thing. There, I actually had some thoughts about some of the things they were using during COVID times and wondering if they were going to use them again. But we can save that conversation for another day. That was more my interest than something else. So if nobody has any changes to make, we do have to vote on the annual report that will go into the book. So the motion on the table would be to approve the 2020, 2021 annual report for distribution to the town second. So the motion has been made in second. This will be a roll call vote. Member White?
Yes.
Member Rosemary?
Yes.
Dr. Carol?
Yes.
Dr. Craighead?
Yes.
Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
And Member Everhart, yes, six zero. Okay, thank you. Thank you all so much for your attention and time to all these important details. I'm going to pass it on to Dr. Craighead, finance, our favorite topic.
It's always what we've all been waiting for, isn't it? Okay. So we usually have finance on Tuesday afternoons. But yesterday's meeting was postponed because of its, I'm being scheduled right on, right alongside another event. So we will meet next week remotely at 5:30. Just so everybody knows, this time it will be at 5:30 remotely. And we will be discussing, among other things, the capital request from facilities and technology. You'll all be thrilled, as thrilled as I was to find out that I am going to be reappointed to the capital improvement planning committee. And so I will be having quite a number of 7:00 AM meetings coming up. So that's always something to be happy about. The next thing on the agenda is an update on the warrant committee meeting from Member White. So take it away, Betty.
Okay, so we met with the warrant committee Monday evening. Margaret Everhart and I attended with Mr. Jet and with Amy Dexter. And Mike Zulis from the select board was there as well. And he presented that in a joint finance committee meeting, we had agreed to an additional, two positions for the Milton Public Schools. One is a 504 coordinator and one is the speech and language pathologist that's needed for special ed and for all the evaluations, as well as the delivery of services that are ongoing in the district. That amount, including benefits for the schools, comes out to eighty-nine thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars. Two police officers were also approved, as well as additional money for the library, which would make them eligible for matching funds from the state that they didn't get at last town meeting. So basically, these are for half-year positions and, you know, the select board has not voted on them yet. They're voting on Wednesday night. But that should be a affirmative vote, and then it'll go to town meeting for the fall town meeting vote to approve. The, the warrants, a couple of warrant committee meetings had, members, excuse me, had a lot of questions. And we were probably thirty-five to forty minutes of discussion with a couple of members who really had a lot more questions about last year's budget and last year's positions. And, you know, we, we answered as best we could. And one of the issues that happened was we were not aware that there was going to be a warrant committee meeting Monday night. It was supposed to be this Monday night, but I think it got moved up. And so Margaret Everhart, Chair Everhart forwarded on to the warrant committee members some additional information about special ed costs that was very thorough to the warrant committee meetings, members for their, for their information. And that's all I have to say.
Yeah. Oh, Superintendent Dexter?
Yeah, so I would just like to add for maybe those that don't know the background of where this money's coming from. That, that was an increase in revenue estimate. That was the net of approximately an increase in new growth of two hundred and twenty-five thousand to the real estate tax base. Net of an increase. And I believe it was the local assessments increase which made the net local aid revenue decrease, if that makes sense. So overall, the, the net revenue is increasing about a hundred and seventy-seven thousand. So as Member White mentioned, approximately eighty-nine, nine eighty-six was for the two positions for the schools, about seventy-two thousand for the two positions for the police that included benefits. And then about the balance of fifteen, four thirty was to the library. But I thought it was important to mention where the money was coming from. So this is an increase to the operating budget. And it was six months for half of two positions, six months expense, because by the time we get the people in place, it'll probably be January.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and I want to thank the Warren Committee for, you know, welcoming us to attend the meeting the other night. And I want to thank Susan Micali for compiling additional information to share with them. I think it was extremely helpful for them to receive it. And they, they reached back out and said, thank you very much. It really, they had a lot of good questions about, it's, it's such a complicated issue. And it's, I think it's important that the community understands, like, the, why we fund those issues, why we funded those positions or chose those positions at this moment in time. And I think, you know, Susan Micali's reporting was really helpful to help people understand that. So I really thank her for that. And I thank Dr. Craighead and the rest of you for attending the joint finance subcommittee meeting so early in the morning. And for advocating for the district and supporting for those positions. It's wonderful to have two new positions from the new growth money. And I'm happy for the police and for the library, so they'll be able to participate in the grant. So it's all good news for the town moving forward.
Yeah, just to clarify that, the fifteen thousand dollars that the library is going to get doesn't quite get them to where they need to be, but they believe that they can get there for the grant money. And as Member Ross Denny said much earlier in the meeting, Susan Micali's report at that early meeting, joint finance committee, subcommittees of, of the select board and the school committee. She was extremely helpful. She's honestly like a walking dictionary of special education and could answer everything much more fully than any of us could. So I really appreciate her going above and beyond for that. The final thing I have in my report is the approval of the vendor warrant. So I'd like to make a motion to approve vendor warrant number two in the amount of two hundred and thirty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-one cents payable on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, do I have to do a roll call, Margaret?
You're supposed to.
Okay, alright. So I'll just go across my screen. Member Rosemary?
Yes.
Dr. Carol?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
Chair Everhart?
Yes.
And I'm a yes on that too. That's, ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you all for your hard work on finance. I, I think our collaboration with the select board is, and working with them is working to the advantage of the town. And helping with the Warren Committee, it's been a great, great collaboration. Looking forward to the budget process for this year. Alright, school building committee. Member Rosemary, do you want to just have a quick update about the, the forums that you mentioned to us?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Yeah, and, and it is just a quick update. I, I forwarded on to you the invitation that just went out today to, we're doing two neighborhood forums. We're reaching out to the neighborhoods in particular that surround the site that we've identified as a proposed site for a new school. So that would include the Pine Tree Brook neighborhood, the Blue Hills Parkway neighborhood, and the Home Inc. neighborhood. And so we have reached out to contacts in, in each of those neighborhoods and to distribute the invitations. And we're hoping that they will be able to come. We've got them to be held on two dates so that people can hopefully select a date that will be convenient for them. And it'd be an opportunity for them to learn about the need for a new school building, to learn about what school building committee has done so far about the site that we've identified as a proposed site, and to share their questions and, and concerns. And to really begin an ongoing conversation. And, and we hope to have, be involved with them on an ongoing basis as, as this project moves forward.
Does anyone have any questions for Member Rosemary? Dr. Craighead?
Since I live in the Pine Tree Brook neighborhood, when, about when will those invitations go out or have they already gone out?
They went to our contacts in each of the neighborhoods. And so that it will be, they'll be each be disseminating those. I imagine they're working on it tonight and figuring out how to, how to get them out. Some will be hand delivered, some will be through email. Like, but keep me posted if, if you don't hear anything.
I will, thanks.
Thanks.
I forgot, that's right. That is your neighborhood over there. Alright, alright, thank you so much, Member Rosemary, and the whole school building committee. We look forward to hearing from them at our next meeting.
Yes, we'll have a, a longer discussion with Sean O'Rourke. The chair of school building committee will be coming to our October sixth meeting. And we look forward to a, a, a good discussion at, at that meeting.
Thank you so much. Alright, policy subcommittee, Dr. Carol, anything you want to share with us?
Sure, yeah, briefly. The policy subcommittee met on September thirteenth. We, at that meeting, reviewed again, the policy JLCD on immunizations. And we will, we decided as a subcommittee that we would need to revisit that policy once again. After impact bargaining with the unions has taken place and that's ongoing regarding the COVID vaccine mandate. There was also the need to get more information from Caroline Kinsella, who needed to consult with legal on, on issue regarding the privacy and record keeping. So that's just to tell you the subcommittee will take that back up on Monday. This coming Monday, the twenty-seventh, at our next meeting. And we will bring that forward to the school committee when we're ready to do that. Actually, I apologize. We, we may or may not be able to address that this coming week. Because as I mentioned, the timeline is still fluid for receiving the information back that we need from those, those other pieces I mentioned. So just stay tuned and we will bring it back as soon as we're ready to have a vote as a full school committee about that. We also reviewed the professional hiring policy at the last subcommittee meeting. Will be continued, that will be definitely on our agenda for this coming Monday as we continue the discussion and review some proposed provisions to the professional hiring policy. And so we will be bringing that forward at a future school committee meeting. The other items that we'll be talking about on Monday include the anti-racism resolution that the school committee passed over a year ago. Informed by the MASC. So we'll be revisiting that. We'll also be re, reviewing the survey policy, which we are supposed to be reviewing on an annual basis. That will also be on Monday's agenda. And then I, the residency policy and the further discussion of exceptions, exemptions under the residency policy. I don't think we have time to get to that this coming Monday, but we haven't forgotten about it. It remains kind of on our rolling agenda for probably, hopefully, a later meeting in October. So those are a number of things that I'll be reporting back on in two weeks' time.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Carol? Thank you as well, Dr. Carol, for all your work on the policy. I look forward to hearing the discussions on the resolution, the hiring, and the survey policy. Alright, the next thing on our agenda is facilities. Do we have an update from facilities, anything tonight?
Sure, quick update on that too. Facilities advisory committee met for the first time in this school year. Just earlier this evening before our meeting. And it was a Bill Ritchie fest. He did a lot of presentations to us about all the work that had been done this summer in the schools to modify our physical plant to accommodate our increased number of students. And went, went to a great degree. And I can't remember if superintendent discussed this already at, at, at meeting, but there's been a lot of, of modifications at both the elementary level and the Pierce middle school level and, and out of the hundred and sixty thousand dollars that, that we were granted by the town to do that. We still haven't used all of that money yet. So we have some leftover and there are plans for next year to continue to make those modifications as needed. And then the other item on the agenda that, that we talked about and then voted upon is the first step in the approval of the capital request for our facilities. And that will then move on to our finance committee next week. And they'll review the same recommendations from Bill Ritchie. And then we'll bring that forward to the school committee to vote on. And then Elaine, Dr. Craighead will have her, her list in hand when she goes to the capital improvement planning committee.
Yeah, Members Rosemary, Superintendent Jet did at our last meeting mention every, all of the accommodations and adjustments that we made to the facilities to accommodate the, the increase in numbers. So thank you for all your work on that. It's a, it's such an important part of our work. And the commitment of the district to maintain the facilities, once they were, you know, rebuilt twenty years ago. You know, that was a real push from the original school building committee to not let the buildings get into disrepair. And to set on top of all of the things. Yes, Member White?
So, but one of the things that Bill Ritchie spoke about tonight is that what he needs to be spending and what actually is getting given to him every year, there's a huge discrepancy between what we need and what we have. And one of the things he talked about was that all of the units that are on top of our roofs, that are basically our heating and cooling systems, are all getting quite they're fifteen to twenty-something years old. And they're replacing motors and they're replacing parts. But at some point, they're going to have to be replaced and that cost is pretty significant. And the other, the other thing I wanted to mention is, you know, in terms of the schools, one of the issues is that it's hard to sort of, when we're in front of town meeting and we have a limited amount of time to talk, to really talk about what our school crowding situation is and how the classrooms look and how the spaces look these days. And I think we talked a little bit about whether or not we might need to want to think about asking the principals to do some kind of a video, you know, maybe all of them together can make it concise, to show town meeting members and town people what the schools look like, what the spaces look like. So that people can really visually grasp how crowded we are. I really think we need to do something like that because we have such limited time at town meeting to talk about our budget, much less all the other issues. So I really think something like that would be very helpful.
Member Ross Denny?
No, I completely agree with Betty. And I think having some testimonials of the students that are in those crowded spaces. I did my son's open house at Pierce. And he's in a part of the library. I'm not sure if it's a regular classroom. But I was really surprised at how crowded the school felt, just watching the parents. And not every parent has the opportunity to go to open house. But the building is crowded. If the parents are there and it looks crowded, I can't imagine when you have almost a thousand students in and out of that building.
One of the Warren Committee members, oh, sorry, Dr. Carol, let you go. But one of the Warren Committee members was at the open house and joined the Warren Committee because it was a very important conversation and he wanted to be at the meeting. But he was saying the same thing. He was like, in like a little hallway somewhere, and I don't even know. but he was saying the same thing. He was like, in like, a little hallway somewhere, and I don't even know, and he said, "There's so many people everywhere. There's so many people," Superintendent Jett. And I was saying that I love seeing my neighborhood fill up with cars again, you know, I haven't, I haven't been that feeling at the Pierce in over eighteen months. And he was saying, "Yeah, okay, but there's a lot of people here right now," so, Dr. Craighead, I'm sorry.
Um, I sort of forget what I was gonna say.
I'm sorry. Something about the videos and the.
Oh, right, um. Uh, well, maybe I'm thinking about pre-pandemic times, but isn't there a, a session that's usually held before town meeting where we could do stuff, or we could show a, a video like that? Or I, I guess just have it available to town meeting members, if it's all gonna be remote, that we would have it um, disseminated to them. But um, but I totally agree um, uh, with what Member White is, is advocating for. Um, because I felt like in May, when we were talking about the budget, there just was not enough time to get to all of the reasons that we had for all of the needs that we had uh, in the district. And, you know, I, I, I took more than the ten minutes, and the moderator had to uh, remind me that I only had ten minutes, and I was talking as fast as I could and saying as much as I could. But um, we really do, as Member White said, need to get the word out, but not just that. Um, Member Ross Denny is, is perfectly right, too, that we need to have it come from the people who are dealing with this every day and really showing it um, visually. So I think it's a great idea.
I think it's a great project for maybe, like, I'm thinking of like, the kids that do the TV stuff and the videos at the high school. I think it'd be a really great project, even like, a project for them to get greeted on, right, like.
I love that idea, yeah.
And interview their fellow classmates, like, young kids, middle kids, and then put it together as um, as a, as a testimonial to, to what the, you know, to the wonderful, wonderful district we have, but to the fact that we need more space. Um, and then what does that impact? What does that look like if you're a student? If you're five, if you're eight, if you're fifteen, if you're, yeah, I think, I think it's a great idea. I, I think we'll have to do some research on who we can get um, from the high school, maybe some kids, that kind of stuff.
We also have um, a fabulous Milton Access.
Yeah, I was gonna say that, too, and I didn't wanna put.
That, that does some very creative programming, and, and there's a lot of, a lot of talent there. Um, so I'd be happy to put a call in to Shane Brandonberg and speak with him about it, since I'm on their board, um, and see if, if it's a possibility. I, I, I thank you, Betty, for sharing that. It, it, it was, was an important part of discussion. Um, and one of the other comments that, that, that resonated with me was um, Tony Chikello, who's on our committee, who was the Vice Chair of the last School Building Committee, who is still attending facilities meetings. Um, when he heard about the, the, all of the modifications that we've been doing and that we're now using a stage at Glover School for classes, he said, "This is like deja vu, because this is exactly where we were um, twenty years ago, before the last school building project." It was, or these are exactly the kinds of modifications that we were making, and, and it just got to be the point that we had to do something. Um, so here we are again, and hopefully we'll find a way forward um, in um, in short time.
I can still, thank you, um, Member Rose Marin and the Facilities Advisor Committee. I can still hear Charlie Winchester talking to me when I would work with him on things about the buildings and everything, so I keep him and, and Mr. Chikello in my, in my spirit as well. All right, the last item on our agenda is to approve the minutes from our August twenty-fifth meeting and our September eighth meeting. They were sent to us. Dr. Carol, I.
Um, just really quickly, I have two um, really just minor things on page seven of the Oc- August twenty-fifth meeting. Um, at, under where it says Policy Subcommittee Report. Um, there's just, there's one typo, which I think just is important, because um, it's referring to DESE mandates, D-E-S-E. Um, which, of course, is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So I just wanna make sure that anybody relying on these minutes knows that that's the source of the mandates that we were discussing at that point in time. Um, and then the second minor edit was um, the second to last bullet under that section uh, referring to reviewing the policy monthly. Um, I, I don't know if, I just wanna be clear on this public record. Um, it may be that I said monthly, but what we came out and, in um, approving that policy was that it's bimonthly, every other month uh, is when the policy is going to be reviewed, which means it will be reviewed next at the end of O- October. Um, so those are the only two things.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Carol. We can send those along to Maureen um, and to make the um, corrections. I did see the DESE thing, actually, so I'm not sure if I remembered, uh, talked about it, but thank you, or, but I didn't see the bi- the bimonthly thing, so thank you for catching that, but that's really important, actually. Uh, and it probably came out of a conversation, because that, at the same time that we had our policy, the state decided to have their own mandate. Um, and they said by October first, or whatever it was. Okay. Anyone else with um, corrections to the August twenty-fifth meeting? All right, so the motion on the table is to approve the minutes of our August twenty-fifth meeting with the corrections noted by Dr. Carol?
So, a second.
All right, it's a roll call vote. Member White?
Yes.
Member Rose Marin?
Yes.
Dr. Carol?
Yes.
Dr. Craighead?
Yes.
Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
Member Everhart, yes, six, zero. All right, our minutes from September eighth, two thousand twenty-one, our meeting the last time. I didn't see any. Questions? Anyone have any thoughts or comments? All right, then the motion on the table is to approve the minutes of September eighth, two thousand twenty-one. All right, this is a roll call vote. Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
Member Rose Marin?
Yes.
Dr. Carol?
Yes.
Dr. Craighead?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
Member Everhart, yes. Okay, six, zero. Thank you all very much. Uh, do we have any old business to attend to? I don't think so. Our next meeting agenda items, we have a pretty busy meeting on the sixth. Um, is it the sixth, or is it the eighth? It's the sixth, is that the one thing? Okay. Um, so we actually have to appoint an MASC design, designate to vote at the meeting, and we have to review the resolutions. I don't know what that will look like. I haven't, I might have sent them, I don't remember. Um, they did, they did, right? Did they send them the resolution?
I think we got booklets in the mail.
Okay, I have to go downstairs. I have a pile of um, MASC stuff. We're gonna have the presentation from Toronto Rock and the um, School Building Committee. We'll talk about the goals, Superintendent and uh, School Committee goals. Um, we were thinking, um, Member Ross Denny and I, to ask the um, Foundation to come briefly to talk about the Monster Dash, 'cause I believe, I don't know, that might not be the, maybe they can come to the next one. It's not the last min- meeting before the Monster Dash.
No.
No, okay, so maybe then we, we aim for the twentieth, the meeting before. Um, we'll have a policy update. Um, um, Dr. Carol, we'll probably have something from Finance. Is there anything else specific that I'm missing?
Um, so Superintendent Jett agreed to have Susan Misselli give an update on her plan.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Disproportionality in special education referrals and discipline.
Wonderful.
An, an update on the um, the tracking system for incidents of race and um, I think it was sexual harassment, I forgot what.
Okay, thank.
Called it.
Okay, so do you think, um, Superintendent Jett, that um, Janet Sheen will join us at the next meeting? I guess it will depend on how the goes with your conversations with her.
Yeah, I, I would hope so.
Okay, great.
Two weeks from now, I would, I hope so.
Okay, great. All right, wonderful. Well, that's, that's all we have for tonight. Um, we did get a link to adjourn to executive session. Are we adjourning to executive session? We are? Yes. We adjourning to executive session, right? Okay, so I'm making a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session. Um, this is, uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, this is a roll call vote. Uh, Member Rose Marin?
Yes.
Dr. Carol?
Yes.
Dr. Craighead?
Yes.
Member Ross Denny?
Yeah.
Member White?
Yes.
Member Everhart, yes. Thank you all so much for a very busy meeting. Um, I hope you all have a rest of peaceful rest of your week, and school goes well, and um, we'll see you all next time. Thank you, everyone.